There we go. Hello and welcome everyone. This is a candidate forum for all of the candidates who are going to be running to serve you on our Nevada School Board. We have five candidates and three positions. My name is Susan Matthews and I'm the Executive Director of School Fuel. We're happy to be co-hosting this debate tonight with the League of Women Voters. And I want to welcome you all. We have lots of cards in the back and on some of the chairs and people wondering if you have questions that you would like to submit. And we also are streaming right now live on YouTube. And NCTV is going to be rebroadcasting this event this evening in its entirety. And I'll be posting that information as soon as it's available about. When you can see it or pass along to your friends for them to see it if they've missed it tonight. And I'm going to turn things over now to our moderator, Lori Nardone.
Thank you very much. Hello and welcome to today's forum. It's sponsored by the League and Nevada School Fuel. I am Lori Nardone of the League of Women Voters of Marin County. And I'm going to be your moderator tonight. With me are League members Elaine Bia Geni as our timekeeper and Nancy Bell as the question sorter. Furiously sorting away here. We're also happy to welcome our videographers for the evening Nevada Community Television. The video of tonight's candidate forum will be posted. The five candidates here with us tonight are running for three seats on the Nevada Unified School District Governing Board. And they are in alphabetical order Maria Agila, Diane Gassen, Azadeh Hunter, Derek Nell, and Jim Schreuer. Before we get started, let me give you a quick review of a few ground rules. As I mentioned earlier, tonight's event is being recorded. Release notices have been posted around the auditorium to advise you that your presence here as a member of the audience during this event constitutes your permission for us to record and broadcast your image and voice. No other recordings will be allowed because the FCC requires that candidate debates or forums must be broadcast in their entirety and be unedited. So excited we're broadcasting this live. And be posted either live or reasonably soon after taking place. This means no recording even on your cell phones. And speaking of cell phones, if you haven't yet silenced yours, would you please take it out and do that now? Because we are a strictly nonpartisan organization and following Federal Election Commission rules for candidate forums, no campaign material including buttons, signs, brochures, or T-shirts is permitted in the auditorium. However, campaign brochures may with permission be placed on a table in the entryway after the forum has concluded. We expect candidates and audience members to remain civil and courteous throughout this evening. What we're requesting is that the audience not make or yell comments or applaud individual candidates' answers. Let us use this evening as an opportunity to listen to and to learn from all five of our candidates. Each candidate has been invited to make a three-minute opening statement. We'll go in alphabetical order and we'll begin with Maria Agila.
Thank you to School Fuel, the League of Women Voters of Marin County, the Quest Church and Nevada Community Television and its technicians for providing the community with an opportunity to learn more about the candidates for the Board of Nevada Unified School District, NUSD, 2018 elections. Forty-two years ago, my family and I legally immigrated from Mexico City to Nevada and have lived here since. I attended Nevada Public Schools, Loma Verde Elementary School, San Jose Middle School, and I graduated from Nevada High School. I now, I know firsthand what it's like to be a student at Nevada Unified School District. I graduated from Dominican University of California with a master's degree in counseling psychology. Now I have friends and family that attend our Nevada Public Schools. My niece at Loma Verde, my nephew at Nevada High School, and my two nephews, my two twin nephews just completed their senior year at San Marin High School. However, having my family now attending Nevada Public Schools should not be, and it's not my sole reason for being on the board. I am here to serve all 7,567 students at NUSD. As an immigrant, I adopted, I adopted and I care about our community and I'm grateful for this country. So to give back to the community, I ran for school board in 2009 when you chose and entrusted me to serve you and your children. And now, being the only bilingual and bicultural trustee which gives a good balance to the board allows me to serve our current fast-growing diverse population, providing them the tools and necessary means for assimilation. For the past fifteen years, I have been doing social work in Marin County for families, couples, and individuals. In addition, for the past eighteen years, I have engaged in community volunteering. I was a junior cadet for the Santa Soma Police Department. I have been a liaison for the Canal Community Organizations, serving students throughout Marin County. And I have been publicly recognized for my volunteer work by the Department of Health and Human Services in Marin. My education and background demonstrates my dedication and passion for helping others to empower themselves, especially the youth. All this while showing commitment to teamwork, not having a single agenda, but to have all our students' needs be met while providing education in science, technology, reading, English, mathematics, and more. Subjects that are vital for our graduation and their future success. Your presence here tonight also shows your dedication to Nevada, its public schools, and our children. So I thank you for being here tonight and I hope to answer all your questions.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. For those who know me, it's no surprise that I'm sitting here. But for those who don't, my path to running for the school board probably started in 2003. That was before I had kids, when I helped start Rockin' Blues by the Lake, which was the music festival fundraiser for our Nevada schools. After helping with the event for two years, I started wondering more about school finances. I owned my own home and was curious about the taxes being paid to our schools and asking myself why our schools still didn't have any money. I decided to get involved and instead of complaining, I decided to get involved and learn more. In 2005, I became a member of the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee until I became pregnant with my first daughter. During my time on the Oversight Committee, I learned a lot about school funding and how challenging it can be to make decisions with the funds we do receive. My volunteer efforts have expanded over the years as I now have two young girls. My youngest is in fourth grade at Pleasant Valley and I have a sixth grader at Sinaloa. I also want to mention my very supportive husband, John. Since my kids started school, I've been an active and involved parent. I currently sit on Pleasant Valley's School Site Council and I am again on the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee. However, I'm most proud of co-chairing the successful Measure A campaign in 2014, which is the renewal of Nevada's parcel tax and it brings in over four million dollars a year to our schools. Professionally, I have worked in many different industries, banking, law, technology, and government. I have a Bachelor of Science in Business Management and I also have an accounting certificate from Sonoma State. So why am I doing this? My kids asked me that last week when we were driving home from school. My answer to them, I want to help our kids, teachers, and community. And your mom is good at helping. But better put, there are three reasons. To provide parent representation, a perspective and input as a parent of younger children will be important when making decisions and policies being made that directly impact our kids. Second, I understand the financial difficulties our district faces and I would like to put my prior accounting, finance, and operational skills to work on viable solutions. I have worked in several industries where there were significant financial downturns and I'm confident that experience can be of use. Finally, in my role as a community member, I believe I can help improve community support for our schools by increasing and modifying communication to the public. We need help and we need the community to be supportive if we want to succeed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Azadeh Hunter and I would like to thank the League of Women Voters, Quest Church, and School Fuel. I am a mother of three young children, eight, five, she'll be six tomorrow, and three years old. The reason I am running for the school board is because our school district is one of the best school districts in the state of California. I grew up in this district. I graduated from San Marin High School. My younger brother went through San Ramon, went through Sinaloa, and San Marin. What can I say about the Nevada School District? As it has progressed over the years, it has been everything from great till we've had our challenges to great again. We need to make sure Nevada stays great. We have the largest population of students in Marin County from K through eight and we just need to make sure that we are serving them the best we can. How do we do that? In my opinion, I feel that between different avenues, different varieties of parents and different expertise, you have five candidates here that are all more than qualified. And we need to make sure our children, our teachers, and our community are served equally across the board. My background is, as I said, I did grow up in Nevada. My entire family's lived here. I have banking, corporate banking history, which gives me the financial background to really delve into our budget. I am also currently a real estate agent, so negotiating, working collaboratively with your partners and your teamwork is actually very crucial. I currently serve on the San Ramon PTA Executive Board. I am currently on the North Marin Council PTA Executive Board. I am also on the Executive Board for the Nevada Mothers Club as well as the North Bay Association of Realtors Executive Board. So community helping, community volunteerism is extremely important to me. Working with the community, ensuring that what is best for our children is extremely important to me. I have, as I mentioned, three children who are biracial, who are in this community growing up. As a migrant child from Persian parents coming into Marin County, I've had many, many different visions as I've been growing up. And now my children are looking through those same eyes. I just want to make sure every student in Nevada gets the equal opportunity and the equal chances to proceed and be successful in the school district. Thank you.
I'd first like to thank the League of Women Voters and the School Fuel Foundation, Quest Church for providing the facilities, and Nevada Community Television for recording this evening's forum. All very fine organizations that are deserving of our recognition and support. My name is Derek Nell. I'm married with two sons, both graduates of the Nevada Public School System, where I have been actively involved for more than two decades. Before becoming a trustee, I served two terms on the district's Citizens Bond Financial Oversight Committee, where I helped to plan and review the construction and modernization of our schools. I worked diligently to pass two school facility bond measures, first as a campaign co-chair in 2001 and again in 2016 as a trustee. During this time and with the support of our community and working together with staff, we have successfully maintained the district's positive financial certification. And as President of the Board, I helped to oversee the transition to the new funding system called LCFF or the Local Control Funding Formula, and the new Local Control Accountability Plan or LCAP. I have led efforts to modernize our schools by investing and increasing the use of technology in the classroom as well as in the operational management of the district. Because of these efforts, Nevada schools are able to provide our students with the tools and experience needed for the 21st century. As a trustee, my primary focus will be on teaching, learning, and the safety of our children. I will continue to bring strong fiscal management and a deep commitment to Nevada's children to ensure that our kids receive the highest quality public education as possible. I will continue to work together with the community on the need to attract and retain teachers by finding ways to compensate them appropriately, including support for affordable workforce housing. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Jim Schreuer. And my mother, I grew up in Mill Valley. My mother is an immigrant. She came here on a boat from the Philippines when she was fourteen years old. And I graduated from TAM High, so I'm in 1986, so I'm a product of the public school system. We've lived here in Nevada for about thirteen years. I have my family here, my wife and mother-in-law and two kids. One of my son Luke goes to Nevada High. He's a senior. My daughter Nicole is here to support me too. She's a freshman at San Marin. I have a bachelor's degree in finance from Golden Gate University. I also have an associate's degree in accounting. And one of the things that kind of drew me to thinking about running for school board was when my son had an AP Physics class last year. And at the open house, the teacher was honest with us and said, "Look, I'm short ten textbooks and I don't have the right computer and software system to effectively teach the class." I thought that shouldn't be that way. These issues should be addressed beforehand so that the teachers can be effective and the students can have a great learning environment. So that was the first thing that made me see that there was definite need to take action. Also, one of the big things now is, and we've had several school board meetings about it recently, is the $222 million bond, Measure G, that was passed. It's great for the schools. However, a lot of that money, it's a lot of money and that bond narrowly passed by, it needed 55% of the votes, it got 56% of the votes. Why? We can get into that a little bit more. But the problem that we're seeing now is we are over budget. Each meeting, it's 15 million, now 25 million, 35 million, 40 and 45 million is the numbers being quoted at the last meeting. So we have to make sure that we are fiscally accountable and I think that's where my expertise will come in. I've been a business owner for 25 years and I've solved a lot of problems over that time for my clients. So thank you and I appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you to all of you. And I want to take a moment to introduce our two students that we have up here. And I apologize for not doing that the first time around. We have Claire Weber and Julie Schulman. And we're excited to have you be up here with us. So they'll be asking a couple of questions along the way as well. So now we're going to head to the questions. Thank you for submitting them. We have Nancy is frantically sorting them out here. Each candidate will have up to one and a half minutes to answer each question. So I'm sure they would like a lot more than that. But to be fair, I'm going to rotate the order in which they respond to the questions so everybody gets a chance to be first and everyone gets to be last. So we're going to begin with Diane Gassen for the first question. And because there have been so many of them on Measure G, that's the one I'm going to start with. So just to lay the groundwork, the implementation of the Measure G bond projects to improve facilities in the district has led to some discussion in the community that certain campuses are being preferred over others for projects. What could you do as a trustee to help keep the bond implementation process from becoming something that divides the community? How would you prioritize the spending and would you like to see any changes with it? Just a simple one and a half minute answer. I'll repeat the question for anyone who wants to repeat.
Yeah, that's a long question. Yeah. Actually, there was three parts, three elements.
Yeah, so it's really, you know, what are you going to do to keep the community from being divided? How would you prioritize the spending and would you like to see any changes done with it?
It's hard for me to actually be able to articulate this in a minute and a half, partly because I was actually involved at the initial process of the whole bond. Before it even became a discussion of a bond, I was on the Facilities Oversight Committee. And so I know the process that went into it and that the effort that we made to try to get input from each of the schools. So that's something I think that could have been done better. You can't really go back and change that part. But I think that there needs to be better instruction at the schools for looking at things from a safety perspective and a real need versus a want. And I think that when they originally came out, I was in those meetings, that there was so much enthusiasm about all these grand things that we can do and the basic fundamental things that should be done. Kind of got a backseat. And so keeping from dividing, I think, just trying to get everybody at the same place. You know, the AC was an example of that, making sure that, you know, we have functioning kitchens. Prioritize, same thing. Needs to be safety and basic needs at each school before we do the big wants and changes. I think we have to make changes because we're running out of money. So I see my stop sign. Oh, okay. Thank you.
So I was not part of the implementation, obviously, but I did help and volunteer with phone banking for Measure G. As a property owner, before my children were actually in public schools, I knew the importance of having good public education, having great teachers, having great resources. As far as how to divide the community, I think communication is really key. It is extremely important. It is crucial for our community to know what is going on for NUSD to be completely transparent. I think they need to understand that due to uncontrollable circumstances, I don't think NUSD is intentionally using funds for any purposes over one school over another. I think we just need to make sure that the community understands where the wants are versus the needs and the children. and the children and the staff's safety and security is utmost important. What changes do we need to make? To be completely honest, I haven't looked at the budget this far in yet. I have to do more studies. I have to look more into it to see what changes we need to make. I think NUSD is doing the best that they can. I think they've done a great job with their schools, their decisions so far. We just need to put our students and our staff's safety and security first over, and make sure that they get their, what they need over what they want.
Measure G was conceived about four years ago. And we began a, a process to go out to our sites in our community and, and develop a list of needs. We identified over $500 million worth of needs at our 13 separate individual sites. There is no way that we could raise $500 million in a single bond offering. So, we had to come up with a list of priorities. So, the list of priorities was a result of meeting at the sites and asking them what they felt was important. These sites committees were made up of different individuals, stakeholders in the, in the community. The issue, when you hear about us versus them, it's really not a perspective I consider in my position on the board. It's about equity and it's about need. So, what drives the spending is where the highest need is. So, we go to safety. We go to operas-, ways we can save money operationally so we can reward, reward our teachers with the, with the savings if, if we can get them, and health and safety. So, the, the, the goal of the measure is to, for all of us to work together and to be proactive about where we are in the process, where quotes and prices are coming in, and trying to do the best we can with the money we have and spend it where it's needed the most first.
Well, I think at this point, now that we're so far over budget, we need to look at all the items, all the projects that are going to be done. And some of these projects aren't even on the facility's master plan. For example, air conditioning at Olive, I don't believe is on there. But I, as Derek Nell said, we have to look at all the projects and look at which ones are health and safety for our children. Those are the items that get priority. And that could be air conditioning at the elementary schools so that they have a quality air and they can learn. It means having safe fields to play on. And this doesn't mean, this could be at all the schools. We really have to look at how the money is being spent. And unfortunately, I mean, if you look at the budget, I have it right here. I highlighted some of the things. It's great that we have two performing arts centers going up, one at the high, each high school. But the one at San Marin went from $2.8 million to $8.1 million. I mean, that is huge difference. The other one went from 18 million to 25 million. So, that's a big chunk of money that we need to account for. And a lot of, because we're so over budget, it means a lot of projects are going to get deferred. And what that means likely is those, deferring means those projects will probably not get done. So, we need to, as trustee Millerick said, the credibility of the board is in question. And now the project is like rolling dice in a back alley. It can't be that way. So, I would bring my skills to go over that budget, see what's really necessary, and prioritize those projects.
Thank you.
So, a little background about me. I, I, I don't like asking our community for, for money. And, but on the other hand, some of the schools that we have here in Novato are older than me. And they need, they need fixing. They need, some of them, we, we're having to deal with health and safety issues. So, so the question is, you know, it depends who you ask. We, we mentioned priority. We decided to, we identified 500 million at the beginning. We asked the community for 222, and we're not over budget. We can be over budget with something that, with money that we don't have. So, we're not spending, we are working with it. This is the challenge of being on the school board. You need to prioritize. In my, in my situation, and we, we, we spend every week, every Tuesday of this, the past month, meeting and trying to hear out the community. That's the most important, the most important thing, is listening to the community. Now, we had a master facility plan, and it has a language. And this language, we, it's in the, it was part of the bond. And so, trying to stick to the bond. One thing that I would, I would have changed, and I would have had more representation from people going to, to the schools and.
I'm sorry, I had to cut you off.
Yeah.
It's only, I know, it was a minute and a half, but we have to be fair to everyone. You can talk to her after. Okay, for our second question, we're going to start with Azade. And the question is, in the school district, in the Novato Unified School District, one of the elements of our graduate profile is cultural competence. So, within that context, it is essential that we support the emotional and mental wellness of students. As a school board member, what is your plan to support social, emotional wellness in our schools?
I have to say that I am really fortunate to be a parent at San Ramon. One of the main things that we practice daily and our principal does actually is the culture of caring. San Ramon has adopted that and has taken that, and we live by it, breathe by it. You see our kids. Last year, I believe last year, our PTA had asked to get buddy benches for our children. So, for any child that is going, that goes and sits on those buddy benches if they are alone, that a friend goes and sits next to them. And I was the person that actually went up to Peeny and I asked for a donation for those benches. I think creating a culture of caring at a young age for all students across the board is extremely important. You're looking at kids from Pleasant Valley, San Ramon, all the way to Hamilton, K through eight. Not everybody comes from the same background. I am a prime example. My children are biracial. Their parent from two completely different religions and races. So, they are a walking example. And they see their parents, they see their friends, they see their principal, they see their teachers. And I think as a trustee, if we lead by example, instill that in all of our schools, our principals, our staff, our PTA, then I think we will be successful in creating that culture across the board.
The graduate profile has six separate Cs. And each one of them are designed to work together to, to educate the whole child. The cultural competence issue is, is an area of focus where we want our kids to learn about other cultures, other societies, other peoples, others, their circumstances, why they may be the way they are, et cetera. So, going forward in the 21st century, it's going to be important for our children to have an understanding of the world and how other people live and what they believe. So, making cultural competency part of a graduate profile is essential in the development of the whole child. There was a comment about social and emotional understanding. And this is very important to, to, to me, as well as the school board, that we focus, as we focus on the whole child, that we understand the social and emotional needs of young people today. And in, and in doing so, we've worked hard in bargaining with our teacher unit and others to come up with more pay for our psychologists and for additional counselors. And we also work in partnership with other community groups to provide counseling. We're very proactive when something's as serious as a suicide or other terrible event that children might be involved in, to be proactive and to step up and to take these challenges head-on. We also implemented and support restorative justice as an example.
I'm just going to read the bullet points from the NUSD graduate profile under culturally competent. First one is engages in ongoing cultural self-awareness. Second, understands global worldviews. Third, takes action to contribute positively to local, national, and/or global community. And fourth, seeks and considers multiple perspectives. I think that pretty much says it all. But we can encourage our students to accept everybody, to learn about other people's cultures, and to, you know, intermix our cultures together and, and learn more about the world scene.
So, I am Mexican, as I mentioned. I, I came here 40 years ago. I, I think I was the only Mexican in the, not even the room, the, the whole school. There was no English language learners. There were, there was no, no special treatment. I mean, I had to learn English because I had to survive. So, I am proud that we have, this year we implemented, and I was part of implement, helping implement the Dual Immersion Program at Linwood. So, very proud about that. And, and you know, looking at my background and, and experiencing what it's like to be in a, in a, in a different culture, new language, new food, new music, everything is so, so different. It was so wonderful. And, and this is why I wanted to give back to, to our community. I believe that our students today can have this opportunity to have a, a, a good, positive experience, whether they end up staying here in the United States or whether they go back home. However, I believe that prevention for any problems is the key. So, right now, our biggest problem is suicide. This morning, I spoke to Mary Jane Burke, Superintendent of Marin County Schools, and we had a good conversation about that. And I'm happy to say that actually this week was Suicide Prevention Week or Month. October is Bully Prevention Month. So, all those things get, get combined. Now, I ha-, I co-chair the Bully Prevention Committee and, and, and it's important to look at the risk factors.
I'm going to do it to you.
And, oh, it's just, there's so much to say.
I'm sorry.
She could probably use my time because I usually can't talk for too long. So, I do think it's really important that the district focuses on the supporting social and emotional wellness. I like some of the programs I've already seen at the elementary school level. There's the Culture of Caring, which was mentioned earlier. And my daughter actually participated in learning how to do restorative justice circles, which was really meaningful for her in elementary. And she's now taken that to sixth grade at Sinaloa. One of the things that's come out recently are discussions of having meditation rooms or centers for kids. There is also the Be Good, I'm going to Do Good, Be Kind program that's been an emphasis at Pleasant Valley, which I also find encouraging. On a personal level, what I've done is I have a Girl Scout troop. And I've been encouraging the girls. We are trying to do on Fridays, you know, every other month or so, an activity where kids can just come and participate and do something together. And I've said, you know, go out and find those kids that maybe don't have friends, that don't have anything else going on. And what I found last year when we started this was that there was a lot of, of kids getting engaged that normally wouldn't. And it's a, it's a safe way. We did these little dog toys for the Humane Society. And kids didn't have to talk, but they could be with their peers. And it was really a great and rewarding experience.
Thank you. Thank you all. So, for question number three, I'm going to turn the mic over and I'm going to elaborate a little more to Claire Weber, who is from San Marin High School, which I also didn't mention last time. So, Claire, it's all yours. And we're going to, I'm sorry, start with Derek to answer the question first.
Good evening. Hopefully, you can hear me. I, like she mentioned, I am a senior at San Marin High School. And I actually turn 18 next week, so I get to vote in this election, which I'm very excited about. I have heard from multiple people who attended Tuesday's school board meeting that Novato High School is receiving almost twice as much money as San Marin High School is for facilities. This personally doesn't seem equitable to me. For the incumbents, I would like to know your reasoning behind this decision. And for the other candidates, what do you think of this decision? And how would you have voted on it?
Well, I think it's an unfortunate approach or way to frame the issue when it comes to need at the different sites. The, the numbers are, are not twice. It's much less than that. And there are reasons for the difference. So, I kind of want to bring up the issue of equity. Equity is not equality. It isn't everyone gets the same dollar amount and do what you can with it. It's based on what the problem is at the particular site and the speed of which we need to make the repair or change. And the issue of Novato High School does have a, a community theater project. The theater being built at Novato High School is for everyone in the community of Novato. So, there's a great deal of funding that's put into this particu- we had to put the theater somewhere. So, there's a, there's a great deal of money that's in this particular theater. It's true, this site will benefit that it's there. But the reason that it is a larger project is in an effort to benefit the entire community. I think as we go down the list of priorities, I think you'll see things will equal out as we move forward. But in the beginning, things look a little unequal. But again, it's based on need and what we have to fix first and the benefits that will be brought forward by having these issues addressed early and done well.
I think we need to re-priori-, re-prioritize a lot of the projects that are on Measure G right now and even that aren't. What I would like to see, and again, I'm going to focus on the health and safety, and making sure our classrooms are the most effective for the teachers and students. Because we have all this money right now, and if we don't spend it wisely, our schools are about 50 years old. If we don't spend it on things like furniture for the classrooms, it's, we only allocate, I believe, a third of the classrooms to get new furniture. We're going to be 20 years down the road, and we're going to have old furniture. Fortunately, we'll probably have air conditioning in, in all the classrooms. But we also have to, we, now that we have these Chromebooks and all these mobile devices, we need to put a lot of money into the infrastructure because our infrastructure is obsolete. And what's happening now is we have all these 5,000-plus Chromebooks and wireless devices, but we don't have the infrastructure to support it. So, our kids are busy doing their homework and getting their assignments in, in school, and then the system goes down. So, that's, we need to get more efficient. We need to focus putting Measure G money to those type of items. Air conditioning, classrooms, furniture, and infrastructure. And then, maybe we can focus on these other elaborate projects that we have.
Okay. So, it's time? You tell me.
No, you just start.
Okay. So, equity is not equality. And so, Derek explained that a little bit. And my mom was the, she was brutally honest, brutally honest. And one time, she, you know, she said, you know, "I don't love all my kids the same way." And I was like, "Oh, that's amazing that you said that, Mom. How could you say that?" Well, she explained, "We all have different needs and we are all very different." That makes sense with the schools as well. Every school has different needs and they all have different priorities. Now, with, with me, I, some, some health and safety issues came up and I had to prioritize. It's just like you say, four people may be upset with, with us four people. But last night, I went to Starbucks. I bumped into some students. They thanked me from, from, from Novato High. Same thing could happen with the other three incumbents who can go to, could be, they could be upset with them. So, it all depends who's, who you ask and who, who sees this, you know, what, what they're in favor of. So, you know, it, it's, to me, it was about safety. Our kids needed to have air conditioning. I listened to the community. I listened to our students. It's not okay that our students were going home sick. It's not okay that they're vomiting and they have to go home because it was so hot. And it's not okay that our football field was not in good shape. It gets to be shap- now, just another thing is, you don't, we, doesn't mean we canceled. It doesn't mean we canceled. We postponed. Okay, so it doesn't mean it's not going to happen.
So, I've actually been attending those board meetings. And I, I must say that it, it, it is so hard because I'm sympathetic to all sides. And I, I remember back when I was in high school. And, you know, there's, there's so much pride in our schools and we want to be proud of, of our schools. And when they're in bad shape, and, and you see, you know, one school versus the other, how challenging that is. When I look at it as a, in step back, I think one of the fundamental things that came to the surface was safety and making sure that our grounds are safe for our kids. I also take the perspective that. I also take the perspective that when you are doing a project or something, you don't just put a patch on it. You try to figure out the best way to maximize your dollars and do it all at once, also so that you don't have future expenses going down the road. So, I think that by them choosing to do all of them at once, likely saved the school districts some money. At the end of the day, unfortunately, there's just not enough money, and that's what hurts the most, is that we would like it to be spread out. You know, Sinaloa has really bad track right now. It has govor holes in it. I'm actually working with the Girl Scouts to come up with a, a little bit of a solution, having L-boxes out there. We're in the middle of getting quotes to get materials for that, so we can help in that way. There just isn't enough funds, and it does hurt to have you guys arguing for your school and being pitted against each other, so, thank you.
I unfortunately could not make that meeting on Tuesday. I was watching it live from home. And I have to say, watching all the seven trustees, they passionately cared about both schools from, realistically, about all schools. It's, and again, it comes down to, there's just not enough money. Now, as a parent, the one thing that is really important is, as a parent that is actually currently in the school system right now, I'm on those playgrounds, we see the day-to-day stuff. We see what is happening on Sinaloa fields, 'cause we're playing softball there. We see what's happening at San Ramon, because the roof is leaking, even though, we have to just make good judgments, and we have to make sure that what is in the best interest of all of our students and all of our teachers, not, not only for just the next two to ten years, but for the next twenty to thirty years. San Ramon is celebrating its fiftieth anniversary this year. So, our schools are old, and we need to do what is in the best interest for not only our current students, but our students to come. And I think we have to do what we can with what we are given. There's only so much money going around, and we just have to make wise choices and make sure our student safety comes first.
Thank you. Our, we're gonna start with Jim Schreier for the next question. And there's, there, I'm gonna mold two of them together, because there have been so many questions, and I think they are tied together from a topic standpoint. It involves retaining and hiring good teachers here. So, the questions really talk about how are you going to hire and retain them? Is that a priority? How are you going to compensate them so that it's competitive and they're not leaving for other places? And do you support the idea of having some type of affordable housing or subsidized housing as an incentive? Or do you have other incentives in mind to create a good workforce? So, we'll start with Jim for that one.
Thank you. I think it's really important for us to retain the teachers that we have. It's a problem that we're losing so many talented, passionate, smart teachers, because they're going where they can get more money. In real estate, when we're trying to determine the value of a property, what we'll do is, we'll look at surrounding comparable properties in order to come up with a value for the property that we're looking at. I think we need to do the same thing with our teachers in Novato. We need to look at surrounding school districts and look at those as comparables to see how much those teachers are getting paid and staff members, how much they're getting paid, and make sure that they're comparable to what our teachers are getting paid, because at this point, it's not. And that's why after three to four to five years, our teachers are leaving Novato, our good teachers, and we have a lot of good teachers, but they're leaving to go for higher-paid jobs. I think the money is there. I think we have to really do an audit of our budget every year to make sure that we can pay our teachers what they deserve, 'cause that's a big issue. And then going to affordable housing, yes, we absolutely need to provide affordable housing for them. And I am open to possibilities. I know we have land here, like twenty-one acres in San Andreas, that could be slated for affordable housing. Or here's another possibility. If the teachers chose, is it a possibility to sell that land and, and give the teachers raises? I'm open to ideas. I think we need to focus on not necessarily hiring more teachers, but retaining the great teachers that we have.
Okay, just like parents, as a trustee, we get to go to the school of our choice at any time of the day that we want and visit the classrooms. So, I have had the, the opportunity to be able to attend our teachers and see them in action. We have fantastic teachers. Some, we're trying to hire more bilingual teachers, but we've asked a lot of our teachers. We've asked with Common Core, they've had to learn a new way of teaching, total new way of, of thinking. With math, right now, they're actually learning how to, they're actually learning how to, to, to think of a new way to teach math. So, yes, we do have a property. We're talk, we're just talking about the possibility of maybe doing affordable housing for, for them. However, I don't think that's gonna be the solution for the whole problem. It might not even affect some of our teachers that are here, some of our older teachers, or some of our teachers that are married with no, no problems financially. So, you know, will that be a, will that be a solution? I don't think so. The most important thing is that we make sure that we treat our teachers with respect. I think we do. I think we're giving them a lot of professional development, to the point where now they're saying, "Whoa, whoa, enough with the professional development." I think some teachers can teach the professional development, to be honest with you. We have excellent teachers. Unfortunately, this, this is, this is a challenge. It continues to be a challenge. We get, uh, flat state funding, and this is embarrassing.
So, I definitely believe our teachers deserve more money, but wearing my financial hat, I keep coming on the, the problem that we just don't have that much, and we have declining enrollment, which means our schools are getting less funds than they did the year before. So, when I take a look at the bigger picture and the fact that that's eighty percent of the, the budget goes to salaries, and really digging in and figuring, okay, what can we do about this? One thing I do believe in is the affordable housing, teacher workforce housing. I think that's a great opportunity. And as Maria said, it, it doesn't necessarily hit everyone. But I think it's an avenue that we can encourage teachers to, to build towards staying here in Novato, if they have the opportunity to have housing that they could better afford and have the chance to save money so that they could buy in the future. Going along with that, I also used to work at a bank and know that there's ways to do special funding loan programs that we can create and implement for those teachers. And that doesn't just mean the teachers that are in those housing programs, but we could offer to, to teachers that are not necessarily currently living in any potential housing. One of the other things that I wanna make, make sure that we do is that whatever is decided or how it's decided isn't just a short-term solution. I think it needs to be long-term. So, thank you.
I think retaining our teachers is absolutely our, our most important priority. As you can see, even when you look at the boards and you're sitting on the board meetings, you see the seven trustees. They do truly care about their teachers, and we care about our teachers. I'm a room parent for both of my girls. I see what my teachers do, and I see how much money of their own money they spend on a daily basis. And me going to Target and getting them a, a pack of glue sticks means so much to them. And there is three teachers that I know of at the top of my head that come from a different county. We need that workforce housing, not just for our teachers, but also for our staff, for our custodians, our bus drivers. To, to maintain the good staff for our students, to maintain the good education for our kids, we have to retain teachers, and we just have to make sure that we do it within a budget, just like any family. We have budgets that we have to go by, and we have very limited money, and we have to prioritize. Again, I think we have some of the best teachers in our school. I have the opportunity of touring Petaluma Schools, Roanoke Park Schools, and I can tell you, Novato has the best teachers. I'm in those classrooms. I see it. And I think our priority has to be to them. And if we can have affordable housing, that they can live near their community, be in their community, see the students they teach on a daily basis, that is crucial.
I love teachers. I respect them so much, it's just hard to express it. When I think of what teachers did for me personally and what they did for my children, it's awesome. The responsibility they have is to teach our children, get the, about the future, the education. There's so much that they're responsible for. I, I'm just in awe of the work that they do. Our board has worked for, for attract and retain for decades. Ever since we, we were a low wealth revenue district, we've worked to pass parcel taxes. Number one priority, passing the parcel tax, attract and, and train, attract and retain. We have always negotiated in good faith and found ways to rearrange and, and fix our budget to the best of our ability, whether it was ongoing funds or one-time funds. But it's always been a priority to compensate our teachers, especially the younger ones. It's very difficult to get by today on what a public school teacher makes. I know this. I'm committed to doing the best that I can to solve these issues. It's my experience and working in the past to help solve these problems. I've always voted for teacher increases, and I'm the only school board trustee in my tenure in Novato that's ever voted publicly against an administrative staff raise. So, when it comes to finding the money to pay our teachers more, you can count on me. There's many ways to do it. By investing in technology, we can save on operational things. There's been, and we have the land in the, that we can put to work towards affordable housing in San Marin area.
Thank you. Okay, for our next question, we're gonna start with Maria. And again, multiple questions here, so I'll try and condense them. So, what does equity in public education look like to you? What, what can you do to close the opportunity gaps there? And how do you see special education needs working into that?
Yeah, so, as I said before, equity does not mean equal. And we've been trying to, we've been trying to let the community know about this, and, and our teachers understand. We just signed, well, it's been a while now that we're working with Equity Project, and we're making sure that all our student needs are met, and that's something that I'm very proud of. Now, equity, you know, the reason, so, so the achievement gap is, we, we wanna ask, why are they not? So, they got, we have the, the higher achievers, and then we have the, 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 the students that are having a harder time. And then we have the in-between, and we usually tend to get the people, the students in-between. And so, we wanna make sure that we, we have this, that we treat all our students in an equitable, and, and I tend to lead with, with and for equality, equity. And, you know, and, and also equity doesn't just happen in the classrooms, you know? There's some social risk factors. Are they, are they not eating? Are they not, are they hungry? Are they, are, do they come from a one-parent home, and, and is there abuse going on? So, it's, it's also an environmental issue that, that happens outside of the classrooms. You know, what happens before school and what happens after school. And unfortunately, sometimes now with the school district, we have to worry about those things too, not just worry about the things that are happening in the school. So, surveys tend to help.
I think you said it. You could repeat the question if I, I, 'cause I, I think when I'm still, there's so many, like, you know, it's, those are, these are big questions.
Well, yeah, well, it's talking about achieving equity in the school system. What kind of opportunities do you see that can be provided to make things more equitable? And this special ed, special education needs, do you see that fitting into this?
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, 'cause actually what I picked up on was something that I read from the school district's Equity Imperative, and that I liked. They actually, I think you actually said opportunity gap, which is one of the things that they defined versus achievement gap. And I think that we're doing, the schools, as I've learned, you know, when you're in the elementary school, you don't see as much stuff as you do when you get on the campus of middle school and high school. And some of the things that I've learned about, for example, Avid, there is, I believe that we should do more mentoring and tutoring in the, the classrooms and working with partnerships to get all of the kids to the same level, whether they have different socioeconomic backgrounds or different opportunities because of their home life. I think that that is really critical, and using peers to help with that as well, to gain their support and realize that, you know, we're not all the same, and we don't come from the same background. Special needs, I think, you know, I've actually spoken the last several days to several people who have special needs kids, and I definitely think that they should be incorporated into our schools a little bit better and to see what we can do to help provide them the opportunity to learn with other children and not just be at a, at a separate location. Thank you.
I think as far as incorporating special needs and special education, I think they are two different things, to be honest. I think special needs, there are children that do not qualify for special needs. However, they do have special education, and those are the children that do not go follow the path. I can speak from experience. I am a mother of a child who does not follow the path in any way. She does not need special education, but she needs to be challenged. I have three daughters, and out of the three daughters, they are as, they're, they're not even equal in any way, education-wise, social, and I think that goes across the board. Just in my own household, these three children are so different. When you get to middle school, elementary school, they are different. So, you have to be able to give the teachers the resources to be able to identify and work with all the children that they have. Teachers have twenty-three to thirty students in their classrooms, so it is hard for them to sit there and try and identify each child. But I think if they had the right resources, I think that would be extremely helpful. As far as, again, special education goes, you, we have to incorporate. We have to make sure we help identify if the child needs an IEP, if the child has special needs. What are the resources we can provide, not only just to the teachers, but also to their family and to their aides? We have students that come to San Ramon with AIDS. We just have to make sure that we have the proper resources to give out to everybody involved, to make sure all the children are given the correct opportunity and the equal opportunity.
Thank you. Derek?
Equity is, again, it's, it's not about being equal. It's about shifting funds and resources in a way to, to help those in, in need, and have differentiation is a solution to that. It's understanding a child's circumstances and understanding this from a systemic perspective that one size does not fit all. We cannot just line up kids in neat little rows and teach them all the same thing at the same pace and the same way. And I've, and I know that through professional training, our teachers and instructors know this as well. And so, the district itself has got an Equity Imperative. It's a high focus. I recommend everyone pick up and read our Local Control Accountability Plan. It does lay out a solid foundation and some, some actual steps in funding that goes directly to, to deal with this particular issue. And we also have programs like Avid. I think project-based learning is also a solution in, in many cases. And we've even done some things around behavioral discipline to make things more equity-based in our schools. So, I'm very proud of the work that we, we've put into our Equity Imperative and the focus that we've had over the last few years, and continue to work, and will continue to work on that.
No one should be left behind, and the district is trying their best to help everyone, help all the students. But it is a difficult task for teachers and students. As was mentioned, I'm just gonna read something from the Local Control Accountability Plan about what is being done and what is being observed. It says, "English learners continue to underperform in both English language arts and math. Socio-economically disadvantaged students continue to be underserved, as indicated by the California Dashboard. But the district recognizes that the discrepancy in performance between student groups indicate barriers as well as inequitable systematic issues in serving students from different racial, ethnic, and language backgrounds. As a result, the district will continue its work with the National Equity Project and Epic Education to develop a system-wide awareness of the issue as well as implement strategies to ensure students receive culturally relevant instruction in a positive and welcoming school environment." So, I'm happy to see that things are trying to be done. It's trying to be addressed, and the district is doing the best it can.
Okay, thank you to all of you. Okay, thank you. To all of you, for our next question, we're gonna start with Diane. And now I'm gonna turn the mic over to Julia Schulman, who is from Nevada High School.
Hi, I hope you guys can hear me. It's a little quiet. So I'm a senior at Nevada High and it's a wonderful community, which I, is why I feel this question is very important to me and my peers. With all the gun-related safety concerns at Nevada schools, how do you plan to make sure our students and teachers feel safe and secure on campus?
So one of the things that I've actually been really impressed by is the implementation of the resource officers that are on campus. I think that that is a huge step forward. I know that there's a lot of discussion about having campuses more closed. And I actually recall being in a meeting where Mr. Hoogboom said that, you know, these are our community campuses. So putting up a bench of fences and keeping folks out isn't the best way to do that. So I think a step in the right direction is getting those community resources on site. And I know there's a great concern about safety that many of us don't even realize or appreciate having not grown up in this era. I do recall when I was in middle school, being afraid that we were gonna be bombed. And that was the extent of it, you know, the shootings and stuff have really changed the face of what our kids deal with each day. So I think that, that that's a good step in educating the community and providing resources for the kids. I was at the Nevada High School PTSA meeting last night, and I heard from teachers expressing how stressful it was for the kids to do the lockdown drills. And so that's something that I think that we need to address. There shouldn't be that much stress when you're a kid and going to school. You really need to feel safe. So, thank you.
I can tell you, when I was going to San Marin, we did have resource officers back. I don't believe they were at San Marin. They were at Nevada. And due to budget cuts, we had to discontinue that program. With the fact that we're able to bring the resource officers back, I think that is a huge asset to both Nevada and San Marin. And I think, again, working with the community, working with the students, working with the parents. And I think, just me personally as a parent, I think social media does have quite a huge impact on our children, especially our, our younger elementaries, our older elementary schools, our middle schools, and definitely high schools. And I think, again, we just have to work not only with our resource officers, with our counselors. We have to work closely with our teachers and make sure the students all have an out. They have an outlet to whether it's a teacher, a parent, a, a resource officer. And we just have to be very careful and cautious with our children and just bring it back to the community. I think us as a whole, as a community, I know, I can happily say that I have a village, and it truly does take a village. As a parent, that quote means so much more to me. And we are a village, so we have to work together.
The, the whole thing is a very, very sorry state of affairs. The change in our culture, the lack of respect for guns and mental health in this country is really disappointing. And I do lie awake at night thinking about this issue, especially when it comes to the safety of children. So with that said, the district has been working diligently on, on ways to review our facilities. Part of the Measure G plan is gonna include things like locks, fences, and possible rerouting and coming up with ways to make places safer. I think our training around teachers, around awareness of the issue is very important, especially when it comes to the counseling and the psychological, psychological aspects of some of our students and the needs. We need to be aware. We need to identify these, these issues before they happen. There's a, the, I'd like to see the Sandy Hook training come into our, into our community and could be, help us with what they have learned about training and awareness and counseling and identifying the issues in advance. The school resource officers is also a good addition in this particular area, but it's not gonna be a guarantee in any way. But they are also active in getting to know the students. Again, it's awareness, knowing, knowing who needs help and what, what, what's being said and what's being planned in advance. All of these things are, are needed to address this particular problem in our community today.
While I'm happy to see resource officers at our schools, it's unfortunate. But I wanna focus too on the students and what the students can do. I have a zero tolerance for bullying, whether it be adults or students, either on social media or at school. And I encourage my, my children, if you see someone that's eating alone, go up to them and talk to them. I know other schools have implemented no child eats alone. If you see someone walking alone, go, I know it's not easy. I remember high school. I couldn't say a word to anybody. But if you can, step out of your comfort zone, talk to the person, include them. I think this will help a lot for students to feel self-confident, to feel liked, to feel loved. And that will help a lot as far as keeping the peace at our schools, cause it's so important. Our kids are there to learn and to grow and to make friends, and that's what it should all be about.
I, I misunderstood the last question. We talked about special ed. But I was a trustee that asked our superintendent to create a committee so that we don't forget special ed. Okay, so that was just to pick it back on last question. My parents had to bury two children, and that's something that no parent should have to do. So, um, I will, I do things behind the scenes. I do a lot of things behind the scenes. Sometimes not even my trustees know. And some things come, come forward and some things fail. So there's just practice, processes or projects that are in, in development. Now, um, having an educational, psychological, the educational background in psychology, I'm dedicated to the now common problems of social and mental health. And we talked a little about suicide. I, um, I co-chair the, I co-chair the, the bullying prevention committee, and that's something that I was engaged in in the community. But I also, I will provide public benefit projects, again, some in development, where the students through research and fact-finding and, and reporting are engaged in the cause to stop the use and the end of hidden factors of unlabeled cancer-causing, afflicting toxins. I, I bring the topic of toxins all the time. I'm making sure that, because just with the guns also, there's other things that I worry about, the toxins, and now the vaping. Vaping, students are vaping at early, as early as age twelve. This has to stop. It's...
You all asked great questions. I'm sorry if we couldn't get to all of them. There were so many. We're gonna launch into our last question now before we ask for their closing statements. So for this one, we'll start with Azade. And the last question is, what will be your top three priorities as a school board trustee?
My top three priorities, my top priority is obviously the children. It's the children all across the board. We have, as mentioned before, we have different funding for the different schools. Pleasant Valley gets different amount of funding versus Hamilton versus Loma. And I think my priority is to make sure all the students across the board, K through twelve, get the same amount of resources, same amount of help, same amount of education. And the teachers get the same amount of help to ensure that the students are successful. My next priority is the budget. Our budget, our staff, our administrators, our trustees, they are doing the best they can with what little resources they have as far as the amount of money that they are getting in. So a fresh pair of eyes, a fresh perspective of a parent who's out there daily looking at all of these situations at hand. I think that would be my, my main second priority would be the budget. And then community involvement. I think there are so many children and so many community members across the board that just don't understand what is going on behind the scenes. They're either hesitant. They're either scared. They're just, or just plain uninformed cause they don't have the time to go to the school board meetings, go to the PTA meetings. And I think my next, my third one is to make sure communication is very important. Communication is goes across the board to all, all parents. Come up with some kind of a transparent newsletter, survey, whatever we have to do. But these are all things that we have to work together as a team, as a collaborative team, to get the community involved.
Great. Derek, your top three?
Number, number one is gonna be student learning, teaching and learning. That's what we do. Primarily, the focus is gonna be on the continued implementation of Common Core and doing our best to help our teachers and instructors and aides through professional development and other means so that they can do their jobs to the best of their abilities. It's my number one priority, and everything that I would do in support of that is in support of that. And fiscal softency is a fiduciary responsibility of a trustee. And we, we have to pay attention to the numbers and figure out what our priorities are. We have to start to look ahead and to start to deal with declining enrollment, which is gonna mean fewer dollars to the district, which could lead to school consolidation at the worst-case scenario. But maybe we can fix those things by putting our land assets to better work. And finally, it's gonna be community engagement. I, I support the concept. It's our, it's one of our top four priorities from a district perspective. But these are our schools. Public education is about us and our town and our community. And the more people that know what we're doing, the better our students are likely to do. And that's why we're supporting proactive communications, whether it be the websites or, or through our schools, but getting engaged in the community.
Thank you. Jim, your top three priorities?
I'd like to make sure that our teachers are well-equipped with the tools that they need to effectively teach their classes. And I'd like the students to have a good learning environment, which includes enough furniture. I know some teachers have so many students in their classes at high school that they're borrowing chairs and desks from other classrooms. So my focus will be having a good learning environment for teachers and students. And I'd like to see the teachers being used more as consultants rather than hiring expensive consultants. I think the collaboration between teachers and students, there's a lot of projects that they could be working on together and giving them, with real-life scenarios, giving them real-life experience. And by recognizing a job well-done, whether that's coming up with a logo for the, the, the school or coming up with furniture that the classrooms can benefit from, just projects like that. Let's consult the teachers, see what they say about working with the students on things like that. I think Measure G really needs to be looked at carefully at this point about the projects that are gonna be done and what money's allocated where. And then, uh, third, I think we really need to look at fair pay for our teacher because we're losing them at a rapid rate. We're losing good teachers. So we really need to make sure that we are paying them fairly and that they can make a decent living.
Great. Thanks, Maria. Your top three?
Yes, so definitely equity, make sure that we educate all our students and give them all the opportunity to have them receive the need that they deserve and that they're entitled to. And that would tie in with student success and staff success. So, um, some of the things that, that were mentioned is, um, I, I agree with completely. And, um, on the other hand, that my other, my other reason, my other goal would be safety. And so sometimes one has to prioritize, but definitely equity, student success and staff success, and providing our teachers with professional development that they may be needing. And also be able to have our students graduate and focus on our graduate profile. That, that would be my priorities. I have, um, with, with Measure G, I wanna make sure that in this process, that we include our community. And also if we talk about San Andreas property, I wanna make sure that the process is crystal clear, that we are transparent and that we're in constant communication with our community. I also encourage our community to reach out to us. And I think communication then is the big part of success.
Thank you. Diane, top three?
Um, so my top three priorities would start with creating opportunities for success for our students. I would next think of how to improve the work environments for our teachers. I think that's really critical, especially right now. And third, I would try to stabilize and increase our funding. And by doing that, I think...
By October twenty-second, and vote-by-mail requests have to be received no later than October thirtieth. Also, if you go to the League of Women Voters Voters Edge website, it's votersedge.org/CA. So V-O-T-E-R-S-E-D-G-E dot O-R-G slash C-A. And enter your street address and your zip code. You'll be able to see your own ballots with links to the candidates, the issues, the ballot measures, and information about the voting process itself. It's very concise and helpful. It's a, it's a terrific tool. So, um, now the candidates will make their closing statements. They have two minutes, a little bit longer. And we're gonna start in reverse alphabetical order, so we're gonna begin with Jim Schwerer.
I wanna make sure that the taxpayers, the public, the teachers, and the students have a true voice and their concerns and suggestions are not only heard, but implemented. I'm very concerned about the Measure G money and how it's spent and what we can do to better our schools. There's a lot of work to be done. I think everyone here, I wanna recognize, I think it's great that the Nevada voters have a choice. You've heard a little bit about all our experience levels. And I, I wanna say thank you to everybody, cause I, I'm learning, my eyes are being opened as far as the work is involved, the motives. I, I know of these very smart people up here. I just wanna recognize all of you because I, I think the Nevada voters should appreciate the sacrifices that are being made, and I really acknowledge that. So thank you for your time and, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Fiddling away here. The reason I'm running for another term is to continue implementation of the state's new local control funding formula, LCFF, and the new local control accountability plan, LCAP. These two new systems pose unique challenges and opportunities for our schools. The new formulas allow local community members and parents to decide on how best to allocate state funding toward meeting our schools' distinct needs and priorities while at the same time determining how we will measure the results and hold our schools accountable. As an experienced trustee, I will work diligently to ensure our resources are used carefully and equitably and to meet the needs of each of our schools and the individual students that we serve. During these past years, progress has been made in improving our facilities, integrating technology into the classroom, and serving all student groups. With your support, I will continue to apply my experience toward bringing about more positive changes here in the Nevada Unified School District. I pledge to do all that I can to educate our children, and based on these shared ideals, I respectfully ask for your support. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that if you don't take anything away from tonight from the five of us up here, please take away that the children really are truly our most important priority. And with that being said, our teachers are right there with them. They work hand-in-hand together. So as a parent of three young children, my oldest being eight, I have many years in the school district to come, and I think my priority is gonna be the school district. Our community is only gonna get better as our children get better, as our school gets better, and our education gets better. Our community is going to be strong if we have strong educations and strong schools. So it is a circle that we have to work together. And again, communication, as, as mentioned, is you need the parents that are out there. You need a voice of the parents. However, you also need the expertise from the panel that has been there, that has seen children go through K through twelve. Some of our panels, some of our trustees have kids that are currently in high school, and some have just graduated from high school. So they've seen what the past twelve years have been like, and now it's time to work hand-in-hand with them for us that are coming up in the school district to work and make sure that the school districts that we grew up in are not the same school districts that we have today. that the school districts that we grew up in are not the same school districts that we have today. So we have to always stay one step ahead of the ever-changing world, and it's time for a little bit of a change. Thank you.
So I'm gonna go a little bit off my script, um, because I just wanna say that I appreciate how many people there are, um, here tonight. Um, this is an important thing, um, and it's really important to me, and I, I appreciate the opportunity for being able to present to you, um, who I am and what I believe in. Um, and those that know me really well know that this is extremely hard for me. Um, but despite all that, I did enjoy being here and the opportunity to, um, have you listen to my thoughts and talking about important things in our schools um, that have, you know, a lot to do with, you know, serving on the board and the importance of, um, what we do for the benefit of our kids and the community and our teachers. Um, hopefully, I've managed to convey the reason I am here, and I've shown what, I'm well-qualified to fill a seat being vacated by Shelley Scott. I'm dedicated and committed to helping our kids and our teachers. I've volunteered for over fifteen years in our schools and on behalf of our community. And with twenty-five years' budget, finance, and operational work experience, I'm more than ready to take on the role of school trustee. In closing, I'd like to share a sentiment I heard on CNN from Andre Schleicher. "The school system of today represents the economy we will have tomorrow. I want to be a part of making the economy of tomorrow something great." Thank you.
As an experienced trustee, I have worked in collaboration with parents, teachers, school administrators, staff, other trustees, and the city of Nevada to ensure that best practices for education are in place for all of our ju- our students. I have demonstrated commitment to governance by completing the Nevada Leadership and the California School Board Association Masters in Governance Program, an intense training that provides board members with the knowledge and skills to support an effective governance structure. I am committed to lead for and with equity to assure that all students' needs are met. Um, I strongly support my school programs that I have served and continue to support numerous committees, such as District English Learner Advisory Committee, Joint Legis- Legislative Action Committee, that's where we go to Sacramento, uh, Nevada Blue Ribbon Coalition for Youth, Golden Bell Committee, Air Force Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps, and School Fuel, to name a few. I was part of the NUSD's Budget Advisory Com- Committee, and I'm dedicated to be fiscally responsible. I am proud to have helped initiate this, this, uh, year's, our Dual Emotion Program. I will continue to support and assure that these programs continue to provide the proven and intended purposes. These past nine years, I have also served in other boards throughout Marin. I was elected for fi- for vice chair for the Marine Coalition. I was elected to coach Nevada's Bully Prevention Committee, and on the Board as Secretary for the Marine United Taxpayers Association. Besides student engagement, I strongly encourage parent involvement. You see, you hear me say that in board meetings all the time. A key, because it's a key success to schools. I will continue to support all of our NUSD schools, including our Nevada Charter School. I take this responsibility very seriously, and I am honored and eager to serve you and your children for the next four years. As you have noticed, I'm not here to promote my niece, who's in elementary school, second grade. I'm not here to promote, uh, eh, any particular business, I'm not here to, um, with a single agenda, uh, to, to push. My only purpose to serve our, my only purpose is to serve our students. And by engaging them and inspiring and empowering them, this brings me joy, this is the only reason I'm here. Thank you for your continued support in helping me put Nevada's children first. And I have an open-door policy. You can always email me, and, uh, feel free to contact me at any time. Uh, you can even call me and I'll give you my phone number in private.
Thank you. This concludes our forum. I really wanna thank all the candidates for participating. I do think this is a great turnout. This is very valuable for them to see you and hear you. I wanna thank Elaine Biagini for her timekeeping, and Nancy Bell for fast and furiously sorting through the questions. To our high school representatives, Terrific Claire Weber and Julie Schulman, thank you so much. Nevada-ty, Nevada-ty, Nevada Community Television, bringing us in the twenty-first century, thank you. And, uh, thank you to all of you for being here, for participating, and hopefully for going out and voting.